Mr. Chairman, while we're here.
Okay. All right, I hereby call the Long Hill Township Board of Adjustment meeting for May 3rd, 2022 to order at 7:35. Call to order a statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting a copy to the public meeting board, uh, meeting dates on the municipal bulletin board and the website, by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel and Courier News, newspapers, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Standard board procedures, any hearing conducted by the board is a quasi judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the, uh, the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Meeting cutoff. Announcement is made that as a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the zoning board of adjustment not to continue any matter passed 10:30 PM at any regular or special meeting of the board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting to a later specified cutoff time. Electronic devices. All attendants are asked to mute cell phones or any electronic devices as to not interrupt the proceedings. Brian, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Yes, Mr. Aroneo.
Here.
Mr. Jeanakis.
Here.
Mr. Grosskopf.
Here.
Mr. Hane.
Here.
Mr. Rosenberg should be joining us shortly. Mr. Lindemann is excused tonight. Ms. Brennan.
Here.
Vice Chairman Johnson.
Here.
Chairman Gurek.
Here.
Chairman, we have a call.
Thank you. Now, before we get into the main course, we have meeting minutes, April 5th, 2022. Did everybody have a chance to look at the April 5th, 2022 minutes? The only person who's not eligible to vote on it is Jerry Aroneo. Did everyone else who's here have a chance to review them?
Yes.
Any changes or amendments to those minutes?
No.
Okay. Do I hear motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now, we have the zoning board of adjustment minutes for the regular meeting of April 19th, 2022. The only people that were not here were Jerry, Aroneo, Tom Grosskopf, and Scott Hane, and Jessica Brennan. Uh, among the other people, are anybody else, anybody have any changes or comments on the minutes?
No.
Okay, do I hear motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Right here, second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Got the minutes done. Trying to stall here, but John doesn't know here. All right, uh, now, now we go to our main, uh, application. It's a use variance minor site plan carried from March 15th, 2022, block 11401, lot 13, zone B dash D. Uh, located, there he is, located 1138 Valley Road. Application number 21-23Z, Philip Mastrom Stilis. Applicant proposes to renovate the building and surrounding property to use the building as a takeout restaurant. The applicant is here?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, as I recall, we left off toward the end of your engineer's testimony, and we had some questions, which I see that your report of April 15th, 2022 seems, uh, appears to have addressed. Uh, would you like to have your engineer explain what he addressed and how it was incorporated?
Yes, thank you, Chairman.
And, uh, of course, you remain under oath.
Yes.
Your license remains in good standing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and the record does reflect that, that we, uh, that Board Member Rosenberg is here, right?
Yes.
For the beginning of the hearing.
At 7:40 PM, yes.
Thank you.
And you did not miss any application?
Correct.
Do we have the other mic?
Oh, yes, we do, I'm sorry.
We can get to the other mic. Deborah, do we have any Zoom public?
We do not, I did not do a Zoom for this meeting for the continuation.
Okay, fine, just so I know, because I constantly forget that we're, sometimes I have Zoom. Okay. So if I don't see anybody out there, then I assume we don't.
Yeah, we've been having a little bit problems from the feedback on Zoom, so.
Oh, okay.
This is a continuation, there were not a lot of public, so I.
Fine, thank you.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
All right, uh, thank you, everybody. Um, so we'll just dive right in. So last time, on the March 15th, we went through the site plans. There were approximately 14 comments that I have addressed in this, uh, this letter here, so we're just gonna run through it. Certainly, the goal being to give Barbara, the professional planner, as much time to address the use variance as possible. However, you know, if there are any questions that arise, you know, we can certainly discuss. Diving right in, uh, so I believe everybody has a copy in front of them, if they want to follow along, great. Uh, so number one is the side yard setback. Originally, uh, we were showing nine foot, uh, for the exit stairs. It's really three foot, so we have modified the variance request from nine foot down to three foot, so that's the first one. Number two, also related to that exit stairs, uh, we have, uh, put on this sheet and another sheet a couple pages later, that we are gonna add an exit only sign and also a no parking sign directly, uh, right there as well, because there was some concern of people parking here, so we added those additional signs, uh, as such. Number three is the, uh, awnings, canopies, um, and I can show it on a, on a subsequent plan as well. For the front, which is the western side, we're showing a small canopy over there, and then for the utility employee access out the back, there's another building mounted awning. There's no, uh, footings, nothing needed for that. It is building mounted, it is small, uh, to accommodate that, it is building mounted.
Just for the record, you're referring to the last revised site planning. Could you give us the date, please?
Sure, it is dated, the 18th of April.
And that sheet?
This is SP002.
Thank you.
I believe there's a copy of the entire site plans, uh, it's 11 by 17s there.
Submitted more than 10 days in advance of this evening does not need to be marked as an exhibit.
Correct. Okay, um, number four is, uh, related to the handicap parking. Originally, um, this is all a compacted gravel, uh, just for, you know, to ensure that anybody who's getting out of their, you know, handicap accessible car will have easy landing. We have added that this, uh, nine by 28 section is a four inch thick concrete pad, which ties in with the stairs and also the ADA access ramp. Related to the, to the ADA ramp, um, I certainly could dive in if anybody wants to. It's on the last page of the 11 by 17 plans that you have. It's a zoomed in view of it, um, shows the grades, the elevations, the widths. We have maintained all required access, uh, you know, dimensions and, uh, guidelines per the ADA. Does anybody want us to get into that, or?
Continue if they have a question.
Okay, so yeah, I mean, that's the, the last page, and I can certainly leave to that if, if people would like. Number six, um, related to the traffic, um, this one, I'm just gonna kinda read through. Definitely, if any questions arise, let me know. For this existing access driveway, uh, the county roadway, Valley roadway, we were asked to contact Morris County to determine if a formal traffic study review and/or traffic sightline analysis is required. So I've been in contact with Mike DeGiulio, hopefully I'm saying that his name right, of the Morris County Planning Board, um, and immediately after the March 15th hearing, I contacted him and brought up the whole traffic study and, and sightline issues. He talked in-house with some of his planning board professionals, engineers, and he came back with saying that Morris County essentially treats this driveway as a four-way light. So right now, there's a light going west and east and down Poplar, and we have a stop sign and we are proposing a stop line on the, on the driveway there. So, you know, they talked in-house and they determined that, and I'll quote, "They are not requiring any additional site distance analysis or traffic-related items." In that packet, I did provide the email chain between myself and, and him. Feel free to, to review that. I tried to kinda box the areas of like, this is our communication, not about my vacation that I took, um, but I didn't wanna redact any of it, so you have the full email correspondence right there. And you can see, he clearly states, "No traffic, no site distance analysis is required."
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Because you referenced, uh, a stop line and a stop sign, and that's a four-way light. I don't usually see stop signs and four-way light.
Sorry, it's a three-way light.
So it's, they, they treat it.
But they're treating it like a four-way light.
Correct. Right, so right, right now, it's a three-way light, west, east, and south. They view this stop sign and the light on Poplar as essentially like making it almost like a four-way light that anybody who's at this intersection coming south will, before entering into the, you know, before safely entering into the, to the street, they will, you know, make sure that there's a red light, you know, this way if they're gonna take a left turn, then obviously we have the stop sign there for any people that are taking the right turn.
Officially not governed by the light.
That's actually one of my questions, one of my, one of my questions was, is there a stop sign currently, or are you putting a stop?
There, there's a stop sign currently. We are putting a firm stop line on the ground, which is what Morris County requested. They requested that back in November, uh, when we first got them the plans.
Go ahead, Jerry.
So there is an existing stop sign, are you gonna put a new one there? Because that one is kinda old and faded.
Yes, yeah, we do, we are calling for, for a new sign.
Okay. But yeah. Then you said that you're supposed to, uh, I'm familiar with that intersection, and I stopped there on the way home just to re-familiarize myself with it, it's been a while since I've been in there, but, um, it's kind of weird, right? Because you have a stop sign, everybody else has signals, so I don't know how you treat a three-way stop sign, uh, sorry, as a signal, as a four-way signal. It's very difficult to, to vision that, that we're, you're supposed to just know that as a motorist, especially if you're from not, from the area where people go to restaurants in towns they're not familiar with, right? You're not familiar with the traffic patterns there, so no doubt, people that go to the Boy Scout events at the Elks Club are gonna have no problem, but other people might. So should there be additional signage, which I don't particularly like, additional signage with a stop sign, but proceed on, you know, stop traffic only? I mean, and how are you supposed to know that?
So, um, a few.
If you have limited sight distance to the east, when you're heading, when you're heading out of there, you're headed south, and you look to the east, you don't have good view there.
Right, um, so just a, a few aspects, so I definitely did bring up the whole sightline, the, the whole roadway, you know, scenario with Morris County's, uh, you know, uh, Mike DeGiulio, and he reiterated that they don't need any further traffic analysis, and being that it's a county roadway, I believe it falls under their purview that, you know, if they are not saying any further traffic requirements, traffic studies, sightline analysis being required, but, you know, if, you know, just as, as an abundance of safety, we certainly could add some additional signage that, you know, makes us, you know.
Can you mind if we ask our engineer what?
Sure, sure.
So, just, I just wanna see if I'm understanding correctly, so what, what kind of signage you're, you're considering?
I don't, I don't like, I don't like that, right? But in, on Long Hill Road, there are some, right? It says.
Kinda, kinda.
There's three, there's freeway stop signs, and it says yield to traffic on left, or yield to traffic on right. So.
Something like that couldn't hurt. I think it would at least, um, alert motorists to the fact that, you know, there, there is oncoming traffic from each direction.
Yield to oncoming traffic, or yield to traffic in motion, or something like that.
Exactly, exactly, and something like that, I, you would have to run that by the county because it would be placed within their right of way.
So that will know that it's a weird stop sign or something, because.
Absolutely, just a little bit of an indication that this isn't a normal traffic pattern.
If you have to arrive at that stop sign the same time they get a green.
Yeah.
You know, or it's yellow, it's red, and then they get a green, and the motorist is gonna slow down, and then, you know, just, right now, there's not a lot of people going in and out of there, and the people that do go in and out are familiar with it.
I, I would concur. You know, additional warning signs are, you know, something that's gonna make the roadway safer, it's gonna alert out-of-town motorists, like we've talked about, to, you know, a unique situation over here. You would have to run that by the county.
Of course.
Because the sign would be in their right of way.
Yep.
I don't think they'll take exception to putting an additional warning sign or two within their right of way, but just, you know, make sure that it's located appropriately and that they're, you know, fully supportive of, of that before it's installed, but I, I think that would be, you know, a good recommendation, just to.
Yield after full stop, something like that.
Yeah, I think we'd have to work on, um, the language, there are several, we'd have to go through the MUTCD and just see what, what is the approved language. Sometimes you see signs out on roadways that actually aren't approved by the MUTCD, which is the Manual Uniform Traffic Control Devices, and that, that governs what, yeah, that governs the roadway signage, so we just wanna make sure it's compliant with MUTCD. And, um, you know, as far as location, verbiage, and the size of the sign.
Okay, yeah, and that can definitely be, you know, a condition of approval that I will, you know, uh, that leads nicely into the next topic of the, the right-of-way aspect for Morris County, but I will, of course, contact them to make sure that, you know, we will be adding an additional sign, whether it's yield after full stop, or some language per the MUTCD guidelines. But one other thing, you know, again, if you would like to go through that email correspondence, uh, the only thing that they have kind of outstanding, we've addressed all the rest of their comments, uh, the only last aspect that they've brought up is the whole right-of-way. You know, the whole deed of dedication that they want us to submit, they said, "Once you get approval here, then come to us about that." Essentially, you know, just due to the, the odd layout of the building, where we have a portion of the building into the right-of-way, we're essentially going to need to have the right-of-way line kind of reworked to kind of like include that front area portion of the, uh, the patio there. And again, I've included that with, uh, the letter, uh, directly, uh, after the email correspondence.
That's part, that's part of comment six then, still.
Yes.
And Gary, just to clarify, this is regarding Mike DeGiulio's comment about the 33, what, 33-foot half width from the center line right of way, so it's a 66-foot right of way from what I'm understanding?
Uh, I think it, I th-
Sounds like they're, they're gonna say, realign it, is that what the?
Well, yeah, yeah, they, they are going to be, you know, realigning the right-of-way line. Don't think that there is enough room to go 66 feet, so I, I think it is the 33-foot is the minimum.
Is the minimum, okay.
Yes, yeah, because right now, from curb to curb, it's like 40 foot.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So, I mean, we still have the, enough for that 33, um, but again, we have to go through the whole exercise of, you know, getting the whole deed of dedication, which will essentially rework the right-of-way line in that area.
Is that gonna change setbacks, or it'll change setbacks at?
I think the property line.
When the dedication is done.
So, I think the, that only, the property lines don't change, it's the right-of-way, John, they carve it out around the building.
We have no setback issues, nothing measured from the right-of-way.
Change from what's there now, the existing front yard setback to the property line, and that's gonna, well, it's over the setback, but it's, it's going to remain that way.
Yes.
I know some, sometimes certain setbacks, not principal structure from front, side, rear, but, but there's no issue with any setbacks from right of way.
All right, so I believe that addresses number six. All right, number seven, uh, I'll, I'll move to one of the, the subsequent sheets.
Mr. Chairman, while we're waiting, can I ask our planner a quick question?
Sure.
Uh, there was, one of the items was the two additional signs for, I guess, wayfinding, comment number two. Does that constitute, I know, I believe we have a sign deviation already, two, two signs proposed versus one max. Given that those are wayfinding, are those gonna constitute additional sign is, for purposes of that, uh, deviation or not?
Let me double check.
Sure.
Yeah, hold on one sec.
And I didn't mean to put you on the spot, just to correct.
No, let me double check.
Yeah, like, no, give them the right bearings.
What's that?
I'm gonna give them the correct bearing.
Oh, yeah, yeah, cool.
All right, so this is a turn to sheet SP004, which shows a little bit more of the, the zoomed-in building. Uh, we do have additional architectural plans, so, you know, in your, your packet that you have there, after the site plans, gets into the architectural plans, which does a better job of kind of showing the layout of the bathroom, some of the stuff in the kitchen, um, but.
But before you do, okay, I'm sorry, can you just, if you did it, I missed it, give us the date and the exact sheet that we're referring to now?
Yep, so this is SP004, and the whole, uh, 10-page plan set is April 18th.
Thank you.
So one comment that came up was regarding the HVAC system. So, uh, we ran the initial calculations for the small interior space, um, and we have determined that, uh, it's, uh, where is, this Friedrich Cool Commercial Window Wall Unit, excuse me, has enough heating and cooling capacity for this small space. I, I don't know if anybody cares, it's 30,000 BTU cooling, 11,000 BTU heating, and that's based on the volume of the space. The, you know, you run it a few different ways about the exterior temperature versus the desired interior temperature, and that spits out the amount of BTUs required. So that unit does not need a condenser, it does not need any level of a pad. So we've preliminary, that's a preliminary sized unit. Any, uh, you know, HVAC equipment's gonna have to be confirmed by the mechanical contractor. However, it is extremely likely that we will be sufficient for this small space. Again, this, it's pretty much, the, the size of the restaurant is from like here, there, it's just this small 24 by 28 space. So they will confirm the size of the unit. If for some reason we need, uh, a more elaborate condenser, uh, we will still 100% not need a pad. We will either, you know, find an available wall, put it, you know, almost build a little hidden parapet up top on, on the bathroom addition, but the, the goal is for a wall unit that has both heating and cooling capacity.
And is your testimony as, as professional engineer that there's a reasonable expectation that you'll be able to effectuate the necessary heating and cooling with the wall unit as opposed to having to put a condenser on the?
Correct.
On the roof with a parapet?
Correct, correct. Yeah, I mean, this is, this is not some, you know, super expensive unit, this is a pretty standard commercial heating and cooling unit. Again, we have the size of the space on our, on our side, very small, uh, interior space. So that addresses number seven.
What page is that now, the chairman?
We're now on. We're now on SP05, same, uh, April 18th. So one comment that came up, and I think it, I feel like it comes up in a lot of your hearings, I watched the last one a couple weeks ago about the.
A little topography here.
The, the wall height issue of, you know, this is, you know, the actual retained height, but the wall height is to the top of, you know, any of the, the, the actual guardrail. So, um, what number eight is, is essentially addressing is, um, around the property, we have assorted retaining walls, and the actual retained height in the front southwest corner is approximately, um, three foot. But then with the three and a half foot, which is 42 inches, as you can kinda see here, sticking up, uh, that brings us to six and a half foot tall wall in the front yard setback.
And that's around the patio area.
Right, so that's, that's the worst of it. It, as the grade kind of tapers up this way, it essentially goes to zero. Again, based on how the wall height, uh, is kind of defined, the wall height is gonna go down to three and a half, because essentially, the outside wall, the grade that you're on is zero difference, but then you still have that three and a half foot tall wall directly next to you. But four foot is what is allowed in the code, so we are requesting variance, um, for that, going from four to six and a half. However, um, as you can see on the render, which I'll just hold up, um, the front porch, kinda see it here, uh, that's an existing non-conformity, because the guardrail, you know, that cast iron railing on there is three and a half foot tall, and then the difference of the grass to the walking surface is approximately a foot, foot and a half, so that already is over four foot. So that's just something to kinda, you know, keep in mind, that there was an existing non-conformity in relation to that, uh, that requirement. All right. Uh, we'll just, um, so we certainly could go through the, the sign plans, that's on the last, uh, sheets of your 11 by 17 set. Those are the preliminary sign plans.
And bear, bear with me, because, uh, I didn't have those earlier, were those submitted more than 10 days in advance of the?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Then they don't need to be marked as long as they're in the same form they were submitted.
Yep.
What are you referring to now? The same?
I'll just, I'll show it. So these are preliminary sign plans, I just wanted to reiterate that. So that should be one of the, the last pages.
Yeah, and they're, they're last revised April 12th, submitted more than 10 days per the rep, so we're good.
And that's P2?
Uh, right now, we're looking at P2. So, uh, another aspect that came up was the allowable, uh, number of signs to be building mounted. One is allowed, we are going for a second one, so the Valley Road side one, again, these are preliminary, the font, location, size, definitely not finalized, but this is just a general schematic that shows the, the color scheme in the, in the general location and in plan. The Valley Road side one is the included, this side or front over the, the patio, the awning, which will likely get smaller, um, that is our, our variance request, and just to reiterate, it is definitely a condition of approval to go through the whole sign application and formally submit these and formally get, uh, approval for the sign plans, but this is the general aesthetic of the, of the signs.
I have one question, though, your color rendering shows the name on the top of the, uh, awning, the one in your P2 shows the name on the side of the awning, which is correct?
Uh, and again, these are definitely preliminary, so.
I realize that, but we wanna know what the split's gonna look like. If you look at the color.
I was just wondering if they, if they did it like that, because it's like a 3D image on.
That's what I'm asking.
2D on it.
Because the one on the rendering shows it on the top of the awning.
So, yeah, there's a little disconnect that, between the rendering.
Okay.
And the, uh, the sign here.
So is that sign on the, uh, on the awning gonna be visible from Valley Road?
Uh, minimally. It, it definitely will not be sticking out 48 inches, it's gonna be closer to two feet that it's gonna be sticking out.
Whether it's two feet or not, but this lettering is gonna be.
There will be some, uh, some, some lettering visible from the Valley Road face. This dimension here is shown as eight foot, I believe it has to be six foot, and again, all of this will be fully laid out in, in the, in the sign plans, uh, as a condition of approval. So hopefully, and, and again, that, when you look at the, the rendering, it doesn't show the exact same sign, because the render just had to put a sign kind of placeholder while the sign guy was preliminarily putting together these plans as well.
And just for clarity, so I can orient here, um, uh, section three on P2, the signs over a window, is that the front door?
Yes, that is a, a good, good catch. That, that is a door, that's our patio door, and again, like the grade here, I think, uh, he just wanted to just show just the general size and color scheme for, you know, where that is, but yes. Uh, the west elevation, that is a door there. Anything else of note? I guess that's.
And then I guess, follow-up on that, for, in section one, I think, I thought we discussed that we're not going to have the stairs, but I'm seeing a stair in the.
Yep, again, 100%, we are nixing those, those stairs, and all of my plans and the architectural plans, we have nixed. I think this is just the existing building with the, the signs on there.
They took what, what was there and put signs.
Yes, yep, so yeah, that, that might answer that, then, yeah, they're not showing the bathroom, which is poking off the back here. But yeah, 100%, we are nixing the stairs.
Go to the building on this and just look at those signs.
Yeah, look at, look at those blue signs, that's. That's the key thing there. All right. Moving on, back to the render.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, while we're on the signage, that's two facade signs versus one max. As I see a third ground mounted sign was removed. Do we have a limit on ground mounted signs or freestanding signs? And if so, how's that going to be impacted?
Well, you're permitted a ground sign and they're removing it.
So they're, and they're netting out a zero ground sign?
Exactly, that's my understanding, right? There's, there's going to be no ground sign.
We've completely nixed the, the ground mounted sign.
But facade signs, and I, are we, we're still determining, because it looks as if we might be, are we adding additional? No, those are pre, those are, I'm sorry, those are freestanding signs, the ones they were talking about putting by the road.
Okay, sorry, so let me just say, the wave binding signs, you know, the, the tarifings, those are
Exempt?
Exempt, sorry, yes, they're exempt, as long as there's no advertising on them.
So you can't put a gyro sticker on?
No, no gyrovalley.com on every
No.
So what they do, they do need a variance for two wall signs, because you're permitted just the one. But there's also, if you have an awning sign, you can't have a wall sign. So, so they would need one for an ordinance, a variance to have the awning sign in addition to the two wall signs.
Mr. Chairman and Board Attorney Warner, I needed some clarification with you, Mr. Stork, as well. Because I, I only received site plans 10 days in advance, I don't have the rendering. That didn't, so we need to mark that as an exhibit.
Okay.
Like what's given to us tonight?
Correct, I do not have signage package either, I did not.
So I'm, I'm going to mark the, the render as
I think we're at A8, but let me just double check.
Can we make that A9? Because I think you're going to have to backtrack to the signage and make it A8.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to mark the render as A9.
And the sign package.
And how many pages in the sign package?
Four.
Okay. Were there any other documents that you submitted for the boards tonight that, in addition to the site?
So I believe I sent
This is a clarity, there are five drawings on the signage package, right?
Okay.
Uh huh, yes, there are, there are. So the L and M architectural signs from P1 to P5, that is being marked as A8.
And it's five pages, you said?
Correct. Then the render is A9. We had, the architect was on his honeymoon, he got back, had COVID, it was a whole thing. So we had his, his initial draft plans, which is what I provided on April 15th.
So those are the same plans?
So we've since updated it to what you guys have in front of you, which originally was three pages, which is now four pages, which just says, gives another view of the, the architectural
Okay, so we're going to note revised architectural plans dated when?
Those are dated May 3rd. I don't know, that's, that's definitely not right, but that's what the date is on there.
Okay.
I guess he, he put the
And there's five pages there.
For the, the
The architectural
The architectures are four. Can someone just confirm that, or?
Yes, four.
And did you say we're making that, what, A10?
That'll be A10.
Thank you.
Alrighty, so we're on number 10, provide architectural rendering. You can see, again, this is preliminary, we do not have every aspect shown on there. We just needed to, you know, give the, the general sense of the, the aesthetic, that we are leaving the brick building. We are adding this patio with this, you know, the elevated patio floor within the guardrail. Here's our exit stairs, and then all of the landscaping that is kind of being presented here.
And your intent is to indent the wall back the way it's shown there?
Yes, yeah, I mean, that, that's the way that Right, because we, we want to be on our property line, we're not past the roadway. Which ties into number 11, which is that bush that was suggested at the, the, the last hearing. Contacted Morris County, they are completely fine with that being in the right of way, and that is in that email chain as well.
Can I get some confirmation that that's going to be a white brick, a white concrete wall?
So, yes, it's
Painted, signs, no indicator?
It'll be either plain concrete or white. But again, we do have the bush and the tree that will be blocking the vast majority.
There won't be signage on it?
Definitely not, definitely not.
He wants a blue and white.
Now, we're, we're keeping the, the aesthetic relatively, you know, bare bones, like this is a brick building.
What a hero.
So that's number 11, adding the bush and shrub. I am not going to flip to the, the trash enclosure sheet. I did provide a lot of the cut sheets for that trash enclosure, as there was some conversation about what kind of a front gate we would have for it.
That's on SP 005, right?
Uh, yes, and then I presented at the end of that eight and a half by 11 packet, there should be eight to 10 pages of documentation from the, the trash enclosure company. Which it's just an extruded aluminum, durable. There's no area to put landscaping in front of it, so we just need to provide, that's, that's the type of door that we're going with.
Oh, it's, it's going to be of a metal construction, correct?
Yes, yeah, it's like an aluminum, yes.
So it's going to be relatively maintenance rate?
Correct, and it's, you're not going to see it from the road, it's up the hill in the back there. Number 13, talked to Samantha about this one, and if we would like, we could certainly flip to that sheet about the drainage. Per our conversations, two aspects of the drainage were definitively addressed, being that
What page is that?
We're going to go to sheet SP 08. So the two new aspects of the drainage, just to make sure that all of the water goes where it's supposed to. Directly west of the parking is a new trench drain, and we are providing a detail there. That water will flow towards the seepage pit. There was also concern of there being water accumulating on the ADA ramp. So we've added additional area drains there as well, which all tie into the same drainage system. Samantha, we've discussed about the whole modified rational versus, you know, the, the drainage approach that we have provided. As a condition of approval, we will run the calculations again, just to make sure that our system meets or exceeds the requirements.
Just so the board understands, there's, there's various methodology for calculating runoff. The code requires a certain methodology when you have poorly draining soils, which are, are found on this site. So Gary has to revise the calculations to, to be in compliance with that methodology. And it might change the size of the drywall slightly, you know, they might end up a little bit bigger than what they are now. But overall, the drainage is going to largely be what you see now. We just need to fine tune it so it's in compliance with the code on, on more of a technical level than a, you know
But, but the overall design of it is acceptable?
Right, and I did add additional notes to, you know, for the contractor to verify the soil, you know, permeability parameters. But, you know, we don't have to spend too much time on that, and
That's a condition of approval subsequent to run those tests.
Yes, to, to refine them essentially, and just make sure all the sizing is correct, and, you know, adjust as necessary. Again, it wouldn't result in any visible site plan changes that you would see on the surface. Anything that's going to be enlarged is going to be underground, it's going to be the drywalls.
Correct, this might get a little deeper.
A little bit more stone underneath or around them, something like that.
And then the, the last thing on the list is that we had to establish that there's some contract in place between Phil and the Elks Lodge about the rear parking. Any of their, of Phil's employees will be allowed to park in the, the Elks Lodge parking. We do have an affidavit, if anybody would like to see it, you could enter it as an exhibit. It's very straightforward.
Is it in the package?
It's not, it's not.
Well, yes, we would like to
Okay, then I will
We take your word on it, but
Yeah, you know, we like to see it.
We fell for that once before.
I apologize.
Copies, you keep, keep the original, I'll, I'll give the, the copies, I have two copies. It's, it's definitely, definitely a page turner.
One to me, and then I will pass it on for the board members.
Should I mark this as A11?
Yes. Thanks.
And that concludes the 14 comments that I wanted to, to address before I turn the
No, 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 before you, I let you off the hook. I know we had questions all along, but I can't let you off the hook until one, I want to know, do our experts have any additional questions based on the testimony of the engineer?
I don't at this time, no.
I do not.
Fine.
I have one follow up, if it's okay.
Yes, hold on a second, let me finish. Based on the fact that our experts don't have any, I, I know our, our board members usually do, because everybody, everybody, somebody might have waited to the end. So go ahead, Jerry.
It's related to the stop sign and that sort of, while we were thinking, talking about that. It looks like you have a plan, or the rendering you're calling in, it looks like there's new pavement there.
So, back, back over here?
Yeah.
This is a very preliminary rendering, like
Will that, will that be repaved, any of that lot?
No, this, this is an existing driveway. We are not touching anything east of our building. Aside from, you know, the parking sign.
So gravel parking lot is going to remain, the gravel slope up and down the hill is going to remain?
Well, there, there is a curb that is also, Phil brings up a good point, then
I saw that in the last one, you don't have to go into detail, I
Yeah, there, Morris County, just
The building block you explained last time.
Yep, exactly, that they just hugs the, the line there, and then it goes up the, the curb there. But we are not touching the asphalt driveway, which does end and then becomes the gravel of the Elks existing parking lot. And then we're doing gravel towards the west for our parking lot.
And the Elks responsibility to maintain that, correct?
Correct.
Any other questions of the engineer before we let him turn it over?
I got one question. I believe there was one other thing that was brought up at the last hearing regarding the western side stairwell, stairway. Wasn't there a discussion of putting a, a gate, like a do not enter gate?
So I do call for a do not enter sign that is, well, an exit only sign there. And then also a do not park sign there on this, this gate that does close.
So there will, okay. Because I didn't see, you didn't mention the gate necessarily.
I, I apologize, but yeah, there definitely is a gate with those signs directly on it.
So the stairs are staying, or the stairs are
So, the patio has these emergency exit stairs here. For the front patio, there were stairs that had been removed per Morris County require, or
We just wanted to keep people from parking over there and using that as an entrance.
Exactly, yep.
So what's out the back? If, I, I want to open up a can of worms, especially since it's been settled already. What's out the back that it can't, the emergency, it can't go out?
Uh, just, it's, if there's, God forbid, some incident that happens here, for them to go up the stairs or go up the winding ADA ramp, and then go all the way around down to the, you know, down the driveway. We decided that it was beneficial to have this secondary, you know, means of egress out of the building.
Case of fire or anything like that.
Right, there, there has to be some way of entering easily in this area here, instead of reliant on the, exclusively on the rear.
And where's the no parking sign going to be?
Directly on the, on the sign, on the, the railing right here. Or either like directly on it or directly next to it, but on Phil's area of the property.
Good question, but if it's going to be emergency egress, then you should have gates there. I mean, it seems like you shouldn't.
There is a gate on the top, right?
No, but it seems like you shouldn't do that for an emergency exit.
No, it
It seems like it needs to be, you need to just push it open and it goes, because if
Yeah.
You don't have to do anything, like, you shouldn't, if there's an emergency exit, you shouldn't have to fumble for like a latch gate or a key or anything like that, you should just be able to push it open and go.
So that, that is the, the intent, that we, we're not having a firm like, hey, let's get Phil out here to unlock the gate.
That gate's going to open out, so if you're going to push it in, it'll, it won't open, but when you go to, from the top, push it out.
And again, we have the exit only sign on it, and we have the do not park for anybody that's over here wanting to, you know, go, go that way.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
You mentioned two additional signs, the no parking and the emergency exit. Are those additional signs, or are they just signs that aren't signs?
That's a good question.
I think they're the, the signs that aren't signs.
Yeah, that's, that's part of those informational, that's an informational sign.
So if you name your restaurant, no parking.
That's, that's a nice little workaround.
Any other questions?
Am I to understand that it's going to be a free flowing gate with no latch whatsoever?
Well, it'll have like the automatic close to it, that it's not going to just like free swinging.
But it won't be, it won't be able to open from, it won't open in, it'll open out, correct?
Correct.
So if somebody's coming up the stairs, you can't open it, but if somebody's coming down the stairs, you'll be opening it?
Correct.
Okay. Because you don't want it easy opening going up the steps, because that would defeat the purpose.
Correct.
Yeah, or just like a latch, it, it hits against a piece of metal when it goes to open in and it opens out.
It works.
Any other questions?
Just three, one, one's just a housekeeping item on page one, just, just to note, where you say approved by Long Hill Township Planning Board, we should change that to the zoning board of adjustment?
Yeah.
Another question on drawing SP 010, I see that we have a concrete ADA walkway now. Last time there was discussion about that being possibly gravelled. Just to confirm that that's been accounted for in your revised coverage?
Yep, yep. So let me just hit on, on those two real quick. So for SPO 001, what is the, the comment?
Your, your title sheets say it's for approval by the planning board.
And we are at the zoning board, I apologize. Okay, I will, I will update that. And then the second thing about the impervious coverage due to previous conversations, gravel is the same as concrete in terms of disturbance, in certain, in terms of impermeability. There's plenty of conversations that could be had about that, but it's, doesn't change any of our calculations. It's impermeable, water will be, you know, not impacted whether it's gravel.
Compacted gravel went to concrete, it went from impervious to impervious.
Correct, that, that is, yes.
Also, I noticed your architectural plans do not show the wall unit. That should be added to it, because you have your, your wall unit shown in your engineering plans. But any wall that it's like the A0, A01 doesn't have your unit shown. And also, A03 doesn't have the wall unit shown in it.
Yep, so I, I will, you know, if we want to make that a formal condition of approval to have the architects
Architectural plans to match what you're
And hopefully he'll be done with his, his bout of COVID by, by then. So yes, we, we will do that, and I will update SPO 1 to make sure that is abundantly clear, it is the zoning board of adjustments.
Another item on drawing SP 009, your lighting plan indicates a light bleed onto the property to the west. Can that be corrected?
So that is a very minimal amount of foot candles, that is, you know, 0.5, that is kind of going beyond the property line. We could certainly play around with, with rotating it, but that, that is a line of trees there.
Depending on the style of light, you can potentially put a backside shield on it along that side, that normally helps.
All right, I think that's
You don't really need to light that area.
Okay, so I'll, I'll call, call for a
Backside shield on, on that side, it'll, it essentially will cut off the light on the back.
Perfect.
Or side, depending on how your, how the light's orienting.
And then just one other, one final item, thank you for speaking with the county about the, the bush in the front, I think that's helpful. I was, my concern was about the, that angle, that actual, that six foot 90 degree angle, and how that would look on, on Valley Road. Is there any way that that bush could be, that we can soften that to, to shield that?
Put another bush there.
Or put something else there, like, I'm, I'm concerned about that, that corner, how that, how that looks from
Yeah, could you put another bush in that corner?
I don't see why Morris County would have a, a problem with that, so essentially, just
Want that bush?
Copy and paste that directly, directly adjacent to that.
I like what the chairman's saying, have two bushes.
Right, yes, don't leave that bush, put another bush in the corner.
Sure, we can soften that up even further.
Because landscaping always makes it look better.
Sure, okay, I think that's a good, good suggestion, let's go for two.
I don't think one, one more bush is going to upset them.
No, that's an extra 50 bucks or so, so two, two bushes. I, I will obviously, you know, when I have my conversation with Morris County, I will make sure that that's not a problem. But they've already deemed that the one is acceptable.
Can I ask for clarification, the park, the parking area? We were talking, is it compact gravel or is it asphalt?
It's compacted gravel.
Okay, wasn't there some conversations about the handicap spot and wheelchairs in compact gravel?
We did.
And I don't remember where that went, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we, we discussed that, yeah, we are doing the, I think it's nine by 28 is, is the concrete that we're putting there.
Well, that's the concrete thing next to the parking spot.
Correct.
Okay.
For the landing.
Cause I saw that on the plan, it's the concrete and then the rest of it's still compacted gravel. So it's still park on the gravel, but there's the concrete.
Right. But the wheelchair will go off onto the black.
Perfect.
Well, it'll be on the gravel for a little while and then it'll go.
Does that meet the requirement?
I mean, I guess what I'm wondering is shouldn't.
It's actually not a material requirement. It's a slope requirement. It's easier, you know, create concrete at a certain slope than it is gravel, which did also change over time. So that's why when you, when you exit the parking stall, you need an accessible route from the accessible aisle into the building. So by having the, the concrete accessible aisle, we can make sure that it's maintained at those type of slopes that it needs to be.
Okay.
I was just worried about the wheelchairs, the wheels getting stuck. I know it's impervious, it's not going to go anywhere, but in gravel.
But that con, if the, if the vehicle parks next to it, most wheelchairs will be exiting onto it, correct?
Right. There's, there's the little landing that will.
Okay.
Essentially right next to it and you.
If it's a side exiting one, it'll go on.
Correct. Yep.
Oh, I know. They do have rear exiting. You're right.
They do.
Yeah. Any other questions, clarifications? Yes.
If everybody, the board members are done, I just wanted to follow up on a, the affidavit, the affidavit, A nine, ten.
A eleven.
A eleven. Yeah, actually we got there. Nine, ten. Uh, thank you. Yes. The, um, so this is for, uh, this is the. Reported agreement with the Sterling Elks Lodge for the parking for the employees designated separate from the customer spaces. First of all, the affidavit I have, it's not notarized. Do we have a notarized affidavit? Cause an affidavit isn't an affidavit unless until it's notarized.
Does your original have a notary?
Right. Did, did we officially get this notarized?
I mean, David is here right now, not Bill Lewis. One of them persons is here right now and, and we have another Republican here with her.
Yeah, no, he signed it. I'm, I'm assuming.
That can be, I mean, we, it can be conditioned.
It can be, it can be a compromise. You have an attorney.
Not, not an issue.
If he can notarize it on, if he knows these individuals, I guess he can do that.
We, we, we're just worried about it being official and.
Yeah, I didn't see it until now.
That's okay. That's okay.
So no, no problem. Yeah, the, the, um, so yeah, but we need to notarize.
As a condition of approval that we will provide a notarized version. Yep, easy enough.
Number two, the, the, uh, thanks for the pending application, uh, the members of the Elks Lodge. Uh, so Mr. Lewis and Mr. Shiavi have authority to, to bind the Elks Lodge as a whole based on, I take it, a vote of their, uh, uh, membership. It consisted with their bylaws. Maybe we'll hear from them since they're here, or one of them is. Um, I suspect, I suspect the board wants to be comfortable that this is a binding agreement between the Sterling Elks Lodge, uh, the owners of the property who are providing the additional employee spaces separate apart from the seven customer parking spaces. If the board is going to render a decision based on that representation, uh, if they're going to operate with the assumption that it's a binding contract, their board attorney is going to make sure it's a binding contract.
Also, you're going to have a written lease, correct? Okay. In that written lease, you really should have a paragraph in there saying that the lease includes use of parking area, uh, as, as it states in the affidavit there, because then it will be a binding contract when it's in the lease.
Right.
This is telling us that they're giving you permission. It should be in your lease also.
And, and that binding contract in the lease will be a condition of approval as well. Um, but also just while we're here now with this, it doesn't designate how many spaces or where those, it says at the rear of the Elks property, um, but it doesn't say how many spaces or how many employees we have for those spaces. Seven customer parking. No, well, it says separate apart from the seven customer park.
Right.
But how many employees are we going to have? How many employee spaces are we going to have at the Sterling Elks Lodge?
I know you had testified previously, but refresh our memory. How many employees?
We were speaking about four, four employees.
That should be out, that, actually I would prefer that you redo the affidavit and specifically say four to five, however many employees you think go on the high side, just so you, you protect yourself and, and put, if you think seven customers is appropriate, have that in the affidavit and also put that in your lease.
I'm assuming the seven spaces are the only spaces that are there. Is that correct?
Seven spaces are proposed for the patriots, yes.
Right. And so there are no designated employee spaces or additional spaces for employees, correct?
Aside from these ones in the, the Elks Lodge.
Other than, that's from going, Sterling, one step at a time, uh, up the hill to Sterling Elks Lodge. Uh, and then, so that's why it's important as the chairman says, both the affidavit and binding, uh, contract referenced in the lease, uh, to explain exactly how many employees you anticipate, but also more importantly, how many spaces for, designated for those employees at the Sterling Lodge that is being provided to you in a contract. And one of my other questions was the duration.
Right.
Of that agreement.
Well, it would, it would be the duration of your lease.
Yeah, the perpetuity of the lease.
But also you might want to put in there also in your lease, the general location of where these parking is going to occur. Because if the employees are supposed to park in a given area, then they might not want them down the hill, around the corner or in another area. If it's saying adjacent to the customer parking or in continuous line with the customer parking, wherever they, they deem it appropriate to have your, your employees park. Because I know it's a big area back there. It's not designated for parking, striped or anything. So, you know, I, it's, it's a good thing for you because I don't want your employees parking in somewhere that's going to interfere with their activities for the Elks. So if they, I mean, obviously it's probably going to be wanting to be somewhere in the area of where your customers are in that line. So that should be designated saying a given area of their property is going to be your parking.
And, and it may be that the board, if there's an approval with these conditions, uh, in the event that such lease is for whatever reason terminated, uh, the board may, may want you to return and the board may want to retain jurisdiction, uh, with respect to that, to ensure that there's sufficient parking for the employees and for the site as a whole. Now, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Just explain that comment. If it's, if he is, lease is terminated, his business wouldn't be there.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Well, I meant the, I was referring to the parking, uh, separate apart. No, if the entire lease is terminated, you're not there, that there's a, there's going to be a different use and perhaps.
Right, okay.
So, so, no, I'm sorry. When I said lease, I meant the provision in the lease with respect to the leased parking spaces with Sterling Elks.
That's what I wanted.
Yes, thank you.
I was a little confused by that.
Yeah, we will definitely revise.
What controls next business and their employees parking?
It would be coming before us for, if it's a use.
Or planning board, right?
Or a planning board if it's not a use and also another agreement with the Elks.
If it's a, if it's a, if it's a, uh, um, if it is a permitted, different permitted use, it may be, and, and I don't know, that we have a certificate of continuing use showing that it's a permitted use. It may not ultimately, if there's no site improvements, may not actually make its way to any board. Um, but we do have, uh, uh, one or more gatekeepers, I think, township in the form of zoning officer and construction code official and others.
That would determine that.
Who, who could make determinations from an administrative level. And that made also, uh, based on those determinations might lead it potentially to one of the boards.
Correct. But, correct me if I'm, I, correct me, correct me if I'm wrong. Once a particular property has gone to the zoning board, it always goes back to the zoning board.
Okay.
In my experience.
Puleo case, almost always yes.
Yeah. Cause there's always going to be an issue.
Well, if, generally if a use variance is granted on a property, then it always goes, in my experience, this is why I look to the attorney, our attorney to.
There's a Puleo case, Judge Wilson, uh, that led to that happening almost all the time. But nobody wants to hear those distinctions.
That's for you lawyer geeks.
Well, they, yeah, they only, wait a minute, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Uh, do you need any clarification on that? Are you, okay. Cause, uh, and it's for your protection. We're not just doing it because we're being nitpicking, but we want to make sure that you're protected, your lease is specific and that we know what, what permission we're giving you and how it's going to affect the property. Um, any other questions for the engineer before we, we let him off the hook? Okay. All right. Next witness.
We'd like to call Barbara Elen.
Oh yeah, hold on.
For the record, we don't have any members of the public, I believe.
And there's no Zoom people. Okay. Cause I can't see past that bulletin board. So I don't know who got back there. Um, okay.
Seeing none.
Seeing no members of the public. Uh, and the gentleman out there, he's associated with the, with the Elks, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Might want to push that a little to the left.
Hi, good evening.
I'm going to hang on to this and give.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Uh, you may want to make a copy of it for me.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, and you are?
Can I be, uh, do you want me to swear in or do you want me to say who I am?
Raise your right hand. Do you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Name and address, business address is fine for the record. I'm going to assume you're the professional planner, but we'll hear from your qualifications in a moment. Go ahead.
Uh, my name is Barbara Allen. My last name is spelled E H L E N. I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey and an AICP. I've worked with Beacon Planning since 2008 and have worked my way up to project manager. I have been, uh, recognized as an expert throughout New Jersey, uh, throughout, uh, numerous communities at this point, uh, including, um, Cranford, Carteret, uh, Red Bank, uh, Middletown, Ocean Township, et cetera.
License remains a good standing?
Yes, it does.
I'm sorry.
All right. Uh, that's okay. All right. We deem you an expert, thank you, in planning.
Thank you. Um, so just get started. So as we've seen, the subject property, uh, is known as block, uh, 11 401, lot 13, and is located along the northern side of Valley Road. Um, it is within the township's BD downtown valley commercial zone, which actually permits retail trade uses, retail service uses, business professional offices, medical dental offices, restaurants, childcare centers, et cetera. So the focus this evening is not actually on the restaurant use itself because that is permitted within the zone. We're being shifted actually, as your planner has found, that there, a D1 variance is required in order to permit two uses in two separate buildings on one parcel. Uh, so that is our main variance, uh, is the D1. Uh, we are also seeking variances for minimum side yard setback, uh, as we're proposing the deck as well as the stairs, uh, with, with the stairs setback approximately three feet. Uh, the front wall height of approximately 6.5 feet where four feet is permitted, a second building mounted sign and an, uh, and an awning sign, um, I believe were our main variances. Um, so, uh, the subject property, uh, is improved with two structures. Um, the, uh, the one, uh, towards the southeast is the Elks Lodge. And then we're talking about this, uh, kind of little guy in the southwest. And I'm referring to.
Is this a new exhibit?
Nope, this is A2.
A2, thank you.
The parcel actually as recently as 2015 contained three, uh, three buildings. Uh, there was a.
I don't see that in our packet. Where is that?
That's, that's not.
No, it wasn't in the packet. It was checked in last time.
It was checked in? Okay, I'm sorry. It was on pre-marked A2. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, so as late as 2015, the parcel actually maintained three structures, including a multi-family development.
I'm sorry, did you say 2015?
2015.
Had three principles?
Three principal structures. Uh, there was like a residential building like right around here. Uh, it was a multi-family though. Um, and actually available historic aerials depict the southwest structure, this one, and the former residential building going as far back as 1956. We were able to track it. Uh, the application this evening is to utilize the southwest structure for a restaurant. Um, and as discussed, uh, the proposed work includes creating a gravel parking area, um, constructing a deck, uh, providing stairs and a ramp, uh, et cetera. I don't want to beat a dead horse. So the subject property, as noted with, in this aerial, is located within a commercial corridor of the community, um, with the shopping center over here, a veterinarian's office over here. Um, I believe this has recently been declared an area of need and redevelopment.
Is that the former car wash?
Yes.
And I apologize, but if you could also speak directionally, just in case anybody's listening.
Correct. Okay.
If future's listening.
I'm going to be honest. Sometimes I, I screw up directions, so feel free to call it out. Uh, so yes, to the east would be the former car wash. Um, and to the west is the current veterinarian's office. Uh, so you have a, a long history of planning documents within the community. Uh, there's the original 1995 master plan. Um, interestingly enough, the current zone wasn't actually in place at the time of the master plan. Uh, but still the goals include to ensure that new commercial development within the township is in scale with and oriented to the shopping, service and other needs of township residents, both in terms of design and use, to encourage neighborhood oriented land uses in the village business districts of Gillette, Mayersville, Millington and Sterling, and to ensure that such development does not encroach upon surrounding residential areas and established neighborhoods, uh, to uniformly encourage upgrading and beautification of non-residential properties throughout the township, including, uh, improved building design, landscaping, signage, screening and other site improvements. Um, in connection with the central business category at that time, the master plan stated, the goals of the category are to identify existing commercial development ranging from isolated stores to shopping centers, to ensure that future development in this area is oriented to the shopping, service and other needs of the township residents, and to uniformly encourage upgrading and beautification of properties in this area for the purpose of creating a visually cohesive business district, district, including improved building design, landscaping, signage, screening and other site improvements. Uh, the master plan included a development plan for the Sterling Business District that included goals as to encourage appropriate facade renovation and building maintenance to enhance the visual appeal of Sterling, and to encourage private sector investment in the business district and to enhance property values in and around the study area. Uh, recommendations in that section included to encourage facade renovations on all existing buildings where appropriate as part of future site plan review work and to explore availability of grants and loans where possible to fund such renovations. Uh, finally, the conceptual development plan identified this area as planning area three and recommends upgrading properties as it will greatly benefit the overall appearance of business district. Uh, so the 2003 reexamination report actually reaffirmed this, uh, these statements. And, uh, finally, in the 2017 element of the master plan was when the commercial district was created. The vision statement states in part that downtown should be planned to strengthen its role as an economically sustainable commercial center that provides many of the goods and services that township residents need on a daily basis and also be a magnet for, to people from the surrounding region. Uh, recommendations include encourage a balance and mix of uses that will support each other to promote park and stay shopping behavior. Sorry. Uh, so the application is on point with this. We're looking to reinvest in an existing structure. We're looking to upgrade, uh, its rundown appearance. So it is, uh, more beautified and contributes to the economic diversity of the community and revitalizes this corridor. So we're centerizing, we're centralizing our commercial and retail in one area, and that's what the applicant is seeking to reinvest in. Uh, we can also look to the MLUL for special reasons, uh, which include G to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial and industrial uses in open space, both public and private according to their respective environmental requirements in order to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens. So the town has already decided that this is an appropriate location for this type of use. And so we are proposing it where it belongs. Um, I would also opine that it fulfills M to encourage coordination of the various public and private procedures and activities shaping land development with a view of lessening the cost of such development and to the more efficient use of land. So the building already exists. So it's a matter of how are we going to utilize this. And in a matter, the applicant has proposed a use that fits in this corridor that is permitted and is taking advantage of the structure as it, as it stands. Uh, now on to the meat of our, uh, testimony this evening, which is the use variance. Uh, so we are seeking a D1 use variance and we are, uh, pursuing it under where the site is particularly suited for the proposed use. So the site is particularly suited because it provides parking on site and it can be shared parking. Um, is located within a commercial corridor of the community and is being utilized for a permitted use. So again, we are looking at a, a use variance to permit the two buildings that are existing to continue to remain and have two separate uses. What I want to point out in specific is this parcel contains close to 276,000 square feet. Your minimum square footage requirement is 20,000 square foot. And a width, the parcel has a width of 350 feet where 100 feet is required. So in theory, this. So, in theory, this parcel could be subdivided into three separate, at least on frontage, commercial uses and have three separate driveways out onto that roadway. So, in this configuration, the buildings share a common entrance, which will remain, and thereby reduces the number of curb cuts along the roadway. It also benefits from the shared parking agreement, whereas, as was testified to, the restaurant itself with the seven spaces actually fulfills your ordinance requirements. It meets the standards. But in this instance, we're able to provide additional parking as it is a joined use with the Elks Club. When we go on to the Medici reconciliation, we must offer why this wasn't anticipated within the master plan. And in this instance, the master plan does anticipate reinvestment in the commercial corridor and anticipates this use, it just couldn't anticipate this configuration. As was stated, this small building dates to about 1950s. So, the master plan doesn't necessarily go lot by lot, lot by lot, to address every configuration. With respect to the negative criteria, I do not see any substantial impacts. All the impacts associated with this use have been anticipated within this zone, as evidenced by the fact that the restaurant use is permitted as of right. It is only, as I said, the two buildings on the lot that triggers the use variance. And driving through the downtown, it's obvious to see that there are multiple buildings that have multiple uses in them, and there are other developments that share common access drives. So, it's not an unusual configuration. It will not generate any noise, traffic, or trash above that anticipated within the zone. With respect to the bulk variances, there are two criteria, there's the C1 hardship and the C2 balance test. Some of the variances could probably be qualified under both. With respect to the proposed patio, the applicant is proposing it in the location with the better topographic conditions, which kind of forces it over to the west. Looking at, and that also contributes to the request for the variance for the height of the wall along that front, as retaining, we're retaining approximately three feet. And then the actual barrier or wall is 3.5 feet, which would meet the standard where this is a flat parcel. With respect to the signage, it's not a corner lot, but it's kind of unique in how forward it is on the parcel. So, we are requesting one signage along Valley Road, and the second one kind of has a dual purpose. You will see it a little bit when coming down the road, but it's also unique in that people entering the building have to come in through its western side. It's not a typical, like, you go in the front door. So, it serves to identify the main entrance to the building as well. And as it's towards the side, it won't have the same impact as maybe a second front-mounted sign. And the use of an awning would actually soften the appearance of the signage. With respect to substantial detriment, I do not see any regarding the requested bulk variances. I also just wanted to finally note that many of the questions that were brought up would actually apply to any use that would go into such a site. There would always be questions about access, secondary egress. And in this instance, it's providing a better alternative as they're removing that access right along the front of the building and shifting it to the west to make a safer configuration. So, in my professional opinion, I believe the applicant has satisfied both the Medici criteria and the positive and negative balance test. Are there any questions?
Before we have questions from the board, do you have any list?
I don't have any questions, I just wanted to make some clarifications for the board. I agree with everything that Ms. Allen said. This is sort of a technical variance, it's kind of unusual. I mean, in the sense that you have these two buildings that have long existed on this lot, but it triggers this D1 use variance because of this provision in the ordinance that you can't have two principal buildings on the lot. This board, if you recall, there was a 1552, 1554, Long Hill Road, which was, you know, and those buildings had been there since the 1700s, but they were both, you know, we had to recognize that...
They existed.
That they exist, and it had to sort of be codified or whatever. I would say, you know, the BD zoning with the minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet is not really intended for a lot this size, which is over 10 times the size. So, it's not...
Overstressing the lot.
Yeah, it's not two principal buildings on 20,000 square feet, I should say. And I agree that in terms of a master plan, you don't go lot by lot. And so, you know, the BD zoning envisioned something for a specific area of Long Hill, but the fact that it didn't call out this particular lot is not unusual.
Sure.
In the context of a master plan.
It's not unusual for something based on the 40s and 50s to be a little different.
Right, right. And, you know, it's just, it is a unique, somewhat unique situation that you have two principally permitted uses. It's just that they're both on the same lot, and that's what's triggering the variance.
Yeah.
All right, any questions from the board?
Only board members don't have to, you're when they're done.
Yes.
You had mentioned in your report that, and I'm confused, maybe I misheard, that there wouldn't be an awning out front?
No, that the awning just would soften the appearance, the second, on the side.
Which is the front of the building, but the side. The front of the entrance of the restaurant, but the side.
The western side, the front, that's right.
Yeah, okay.
Not the side that's facing back.
So, Valley Road will have a building mounted, the western side will have an awning sign.
Okay, because some of the things I saw, there was an awning out front, a Valley Road side, and so you're saying it's going to be a...
A flat sign on Valley Road.
A flat sign.
And an awning on it.
That's great, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no awning on the Valley Road side.
Right. Yeah, that's a good question, because the materials are a little conflicting. Any other questions from the board?
I just want to make sure now that I understand, because you talked about a little bit, so it is just the awning on the west side of, over the door, that's it?
Right.
On that side?
On that side.
That's to indicate the entrance. Then on the south wall, that's going to be an actual sign?
Yes, so the one facing Valley Road will be an actual wall sign, and the one on the western elevation will be an awning with the...
Okay, and no other signs in the parking lot other than...
Correct.
Parking handicap.
Sorry, now I'm confused. Now, so you have the awning sign, and then you have the sign on Valley Road. I was under the impression there's also a wall sign facing east.
No.
No?
No.
One of the pictures looks like that.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's good, I did not assume that, but you're right, because there's three printed on there, and it's a good question.
Okay, all right.
So, that's...
So, I'm sorry, that's...
Yeah, we clarify that.
The change is one of the variances, they don't need a variance for having two wall signs, they just need a variance for having a wall sign and an awning sign, because you can't have an awning sign if you have a wall sign.
I'm sorry, but it's also bringing up something else that's on my mind. I listened, I was at the last meeting, but I watched the video, and they were discussing wood signs in the ground.
No more...
That's definitely gone, okay. Will there be lighting on the wall sign? Backlighting or downlighting? What does our ordinance say about that? I don't know if we can have backlighting.
Okay, let me, sorry, let me just double check.
And you have backlighting on a wall sign.
So, it could be like glass...
It sits like six inches off the facade and has like almost a flow around it, like a halo around it.
Yeah, but that's not something, we like the light that goes over.
That's why I'm asking.
A goose neck, goose neck lighting.
Sign, down-facing lighting, right? Can we put that in here?
Yeah, we'll meet the sign requirements of the community.
Okay, so if it is lit, it's going to be lit appropriately.
Yes.
Can we stipulate that it's wood with downlighting, can we do that?
I'm not sure if it's going to be wood.
But can you stipulate that it would be goose neck lighting?
Yeah, it doesn't have to be wood, it can be any material.
Well, I'm not sure the ordinance requires it, and so I think what the board is requesting.
On the Valley Road side, it will be a wood sign, but it's going to be pretty much narrow because of the existing space that is there.
Could you talk into one of the mics, so pull one of the mics closer?
The existing space that is there for a sign is going to be, will be a wood sign, or perhaps something to that.
It can be another material, I was reading the ordinance.
But it's going to be kind of narrow and long, like over the windows.
But is it going to have goose neck lighting on it?
It's going to be some kind of lighting in order to spotlight on it.
Okay.
Right. But it's not going to be inside light.
It has to be according to the ordinance, which is usually goose neck.
Right, we will go, definitely go according to the ordinance anyway.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think, kind of looking at the rendering here, I don't really know if you're going to have the opportunity for that.
We can't have up lighting, that's what I'm saying, we don't want that.
If you see what the testimony is, that it's going to be a long, narrow sign, and that's because the pitch of the roof is coming down.
Right.
So, I don't know that...
Maybe this is more engineering.
They could just mount the light on the soffit.
Yeah.
Yeah, they could, yeah.
Yeah, maybe what the board could ask is that it not be an internally illuminated sign.
Right.
Yes.
Or backlit, or it has to be frontlit.
Well, when you're driving actually on the road and you're kind of looking up, you'd be able to see the sign rather than higher up.
What the discussion is, is that you have the soffit covering the front of the building, that you could have the lighting from the soffit down onto the sign.
Rather. Sign, yeah, or as opposed to having the lights, you know, behind the sign, you know, illuminating it from behind.
I'm sure the electrical engineer would definitely recommend some for that, according to the ordinance of the town as well.
Once you go for construction permits, it will have to be stated how it's going to be lit.
Yeah.
And the awning has no lighting on it, I assume?
No, no light on the awning, other than the lettering.
Yeah, okay. Are you going to have a light, though, next to your door? Is there going to be like a light next to the entrance door?
I'm sure there will be a light to...
Like, you know, like you have, like somebody has next to their house light?
It should be, I think. What does the ordinance say about that?
Sorry, sorry, what was the question?
A light next to the door, the entrance door?
Oh, yes, that's fine, you're permitted that, yeah, I mean, yeah.
That's fine.
And I'm sure there will be one then.
Okay. For safety even.
And what about lighting on the emergency egress area, will that be lit?
Maybe we should get the engineer over here.
Yeah, why don't you come up, please, Mr. Engineer?
Mr. Shorkin, right?
Sorry.
Grab the mic.
Afterthoughts?
Yeah, I mean, we're right on Valley Road, there's plenty of ambient light, like, I mean, there's also...
We're thinking emergency, right?
So, there is a building-mounted light that is facing out onto that area of the patio, so that, you'll have that light, and then you have a street light.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, but I'm not a code person, but if you're going to designate that as an emergency exit, I think it should meet the codes for emergency exit, if there is such a thing. I mean, does anybody else agree with that?
Yes.
It would have to.
Yeah.
Construction codes would put that under UCC.
Would they be able to...
If he is required to put additional lighting or floodlight on the...
So, that, we don't have to worry about that.
That would be...
Could they put lighting on either side of that cement wall that borders the light, that borders that stairs? You know, like, what do you mean, those little lights that shine down onto the stairs? I'm asking, you know, because if you have to light stairs, those usually light the stairs, I was just wondering.
Yeah, those are everything off, if it's one opening, those are...
Yeah, those little lights that, they're just going to shine down.
Right, exactly, but again, if it's an emergency exit, it's going to have to meet the UCC requirements for lighting.
So, we don't have to worry about that, somebody else worries about that, it's not, is the board?
CCO, construction code efficient.
Okay, thank you.
If nobody else has any.
Yeah, go ahead.
The, just wanted to reconfirm that the applicant stipulated to all the conditions cited in the engineer's report of March 8th and the planner's report of March 9th?
Repeat the question, please.
The, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the applicant is stipulating to the conditions and comments requested by the engineer in the March 8th and the planner in the March 9th report?
Yes, yeah, we have addressed those, or, you know, in this latest response, you know, certainly about some of the drainage aspects, yes.
And there were some additional conditions, which, assuming there's an approval, we'll go through when we go through the deliberations. But as the planner, I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, you've either been here for both hearings or watched, correct?
Yes, I've been here for both hearings.
Both hearings, okay. All those conditions that have been stipulated to and discussed by, on behalf of the applicant and discussed by the board, that have been stipulated to by the applicant, in your opinion, as a professional planner, would they have a nexus and be related to detriments associated with variance relief sought, such that they would mitigate same, at least to some degree?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions at the planner?
Before we...
Okay, great, any other witnesses?
No witnesses.
Would you, just for clarification, would you have the person from the Elks come up and just clarify their affidavit and just, you know, maybe some of our board members may have a question. Give it, let him have the mic. Oh, yeah, before we go, is there any Zoom, no Zoom, right, today? Okay, I see we have somebody in the back that just joined us, no, okay. Any other members of the public out there that would like to ask questions of their planner? No, hearing none, we close it today, okay. Now, sir, what is your name?
My name's David Chavi, I'm the treasurer for the Sterling Elks, have been for, on and off, for 20 years.
Do you live in town, or do you live in sunny?
I've lived in Long Hill Township since I was born, I now live in Basking Ridge for the last 15 years.
What is your address, for the record?
210 Arrowwood Way, Basking Ridge, New Jersey.
Okay, and how long you been a member of the Elks?
About 27 years.
And we have this affidavit that was signed by both you and who else?
Bill Lewis.
I'm sorry, you know what, I apologize, Mr. Chairman, I swear a minute.
Yeah.
Please raise your right hand.
Oh.
Thank you, do you swear to God or affirm the testimony about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Including the modest testimony you already gave us.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry. And both you and the president signed on behalf of the Elks, correct?
Yes, he's actually a chairman, trustee chairman.
Okay. Was this document, or was the idea of the restaurant and the lease and the information in the affidavit was discussed with the members of the Elks?
Yes, all along, we have a requirement, because it's a 20-year lease, it had to go through our grand lodge, they have to approve it, had to be done through lawyers. So, and so it had to be brought up on the floor, the members had to be notified, there's certain requirements, by mail, 10 days prior to the regular meeting. Yes, it's gone through, it's gone through all the procedures of the Elks requirements for notifying members and getting a vote from the members and their trustees.
Okay, good, so then the individuals who've signed this yourself and the chairman were authorized by that chain of...
Yes, yes.
Okay, any other questions, anyone has?
I do have a couple of...
Go ahead.
The, and the grand lodge approved and authorized the Sterling Elks local lodge to vote and approve as well?
Yes, they did, we have what's called a grand lodge permit, and they authorized it.
And the, and was there any specific location designated in the Elks lot for the employee parking? Was there any number of spaces, vis a vis the number of employees anticipated for those spaces, given as part of that agreement or vote?
Well, in the original lease, specific employee parking was not mentioned, and that's why we added the affidavit. We weren't quite sure, maybe, how this was going to span out when he first looked into it, I think there was talk about digging out the hill and the dirt and all that, but that would have required a lot more, maybe, environmental approvals, county approvals, town approvals. So, we were under the agreement, he would have the parking that's designated now for customers. It was only after that we needed to work with him more and agree to what he said would be four or five employees. And we talked about, okay, they would be down and to the left, further down on our part of the lot. So, that's why the separate affidavit came later.
Okay, could you just make that an addendum to the lease or add that to the lease?
Yes, we worked with the lawyer, I'll have to talk to him how we do that.
Just so that it's codified in some document that the board can rely on?
Yes.
Any other? We got the number, we got the look, well, we have four to five, we got the location broadly, it'll be more refined, you know, binding agreements, I think that should cover it.
Okay, any other, do you have any?
We have no further questions.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wait, are there any questions from the members of the public?
Yeah, any members of the public?
We seem to have more people coming in.
Yes.
It must be raining outside.
Yes, it must be. They just came in for some entertainment. All right, anything else?
That's it for us.
Would you like to make... Would you like to make a statement?
I think I'll just rely on the, the experts and the testimony from Phil Mastro Mahalas, and we'll rest.
Okay.
Uh, let's take a five-minute break, and we'll come back and deliberate.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Love.
Hi, um, I declare that we're back in session at 9:15. Uh, would you like to come back up? Now, before we continue, are there any members of the public out there that want to make any statements concerning this application? Okay, seeing none, I think we lost one, we had two, now we lost one again, okay. All right, seeing no members of the public, I close it to the public, uh, comments.
Want me to do a rundown?
Yes, uh, you, I'd like to have our attorney do a little rundown before we do our deliberation.
Certainly be my pleasure, Mr. Chairman, again, the board, uh, please correct me if I'm wrong, everyone and anyone, uh, the applicant is seeking relief for preliminary and final site plan approval, D1 use variance relief for two principal structures and uses on one lot, uh, as well as bulk variance relief, side yard setback three feet versus 20 feet, uh, ma, uh, minimum required, uh, two facade, well, uh, one, one awning sign and wooden facade sign, whereas only one facade sign maximum is permitted, uh, or if you have an, and/or if you have an awning sign, you cannot have a, an additional facade sign. Uh, the, uh, 6.5 foot at its highest point retaining walls with guardrail above, uh, in the front yard, whereas four-foot maximum fence or wall height in the front yard is permitted, uh, and, I ran out, that's it, right? Uh, that is it. I'll wait, await the deliberations, uh, this...
Sorry, just, just one clarification, that you can have two, uh, principal uses on a site?
Two principal structures.
It's only two principal structures.
I said, and, right. Uses only the structure.
Right.
Right, right.
Uh, the, um, the, uh, the, um, if, and that is the relief being sought, I'll hold off on conditions of approval, uh, to see how the deliberations are going.
Hey Gary, would you like to start the deliberation?
Sure. I think that, uh, I appreciate you guys coming back again tonight, I think you made things a lot more clear, uh, for us to understand what you're presenting here, it seems like there doesn't seem to be too many negative aspects to, uh, the use of it, uh, the fact that the building is so close to the, the Valley Road was always a concern, but that's the way it is now. Um, I'm, I'm inclined to approve this application because I think it's a, it's gonna be a great addition to the township.
Tom?
So says the fellow of Greek ancestry.
I don't think you should be voting then, I'm sorry.
I look favorably about, upon this application, uh, I will say at first I was skeptical, but, uh, I look at all of what you're looking to do, um, looking at, um, the positives and the negatives and I would say clearly the positives outweigh the negatives and, if the care that has been described is put into the, uh, form, formatting of the building and the parking, I, I think that, uh, you will find success and I would be in fa, I would be much in favor of this application.
Jessica?
Uh, I agree, I think that your planner laid out, um, both the, the particularly suited use and the, the negative criteria accurately and I agree with her assessment, I think that it will make a great addition to the community and is consistent with our master plan and I wish you the best of luck, I'm, I'm for the application.
Scott?
Yes, um, I agree with Gary in the first deliberation, it was a little skeptical of what's going on, but now it's very clear. I am very much in favor of this because it's in a great location, it's a building that, um, i- it, right now is in a little duress, but I think this could be a great asset to our community and I'm very much in favor of it.
Jerry?
Yes, is it Mr. Maschra Mahalas, do I say that correctly?
Mr. Mahalas.
Mahalas, I'm sorry, um, I, I heard your testimony from the prior meeting on the videotape, so I watched that and I was very impressed with your, your history in the restaurant business and you're obviously a hard worker to get where you were and you mentioned the one word, um, which I, I hope all restaurateurs are out there, you said clean, you know, that's the most important thing in a restaurant, right? So I, I love to hear that and I think that's, that's wonderful and I could tell by your application, uh, it's a, it's a, it's in disrepair right now, no offense to the Elks or anybody else or to Mike, anybody in the past, but it's a very clean application also, like, it's a very small lot, it's a very small, not lot, excuse me, a very small structure, you don't have a lot to work with there, but I think your plan looks great, I think it's a wonderful use of an existing eyesore, I, I think it's a tremendous improvement and that should be going on all over our town, I'm so happy, I'm also happy to see that this is really a new economy story too, I mean, you're not gonna try to fill a restaurant with 80 people and serve them dishes, right? This is, this is how people eat now and this is, I, I, we hear a lot in our town, I can't, if only the town would get out of my way, I don't have this, I don't have that, but you're actually out there doing it and that's what I like to see, it's, it's a wonderful story, yes, you meet the criteria, you are no, you're not harming our zoning plan or the intent of our own plan or our zoning ordinance or anything like that, uh, the use is permitted in the zone, so I, I just wish you the best, I'll, I'll stop talking and whatever, I concur with what everybody else said.
Jonathan?
Yeah, I concur with my fellow board members, you'd be a very welcome addition to our town and I will be fully supportive of this application.
Right.
Uh, yes, I agree with the other board members, uh, I think the restaurant is permitted use in the zone, the lot is large enough to support two independent principal structures, advances the purpose of the municipal land use law and is consistent with the commercial use areas of the master plan, uh, the bulk variances that we discussed are, are the result of the existing conditions and the sighting of the existing building and the existing topography, uh, it has been demonstrated that those bulk variances can be accommodated without a negative impact to the adjacent properties, I think the application meets both the positive and negative criteria and I'm in favor of the application.
Uh, yes, I, uh, I too am in favor and I'd also like to thank the applicant, their attorney and their, and their experts, uh, for coming back a second time and giving us more information, allowing us to have more detail about what's going on there and working with the board because we're here to make sure that, one, you get what you want and that what you get is what you need and that you can use it, uh, to the, to your benefit, uh, and I believe that you've done that, uh, by showing us, uh, more detail, by taking things into consideration that we've asked you to, uh, the, our attorney will go over the, uh, the conditions, but I think that it will be a great asset to the community and I look forward to, uh, your business opening, uh, and, uh, the building unfortunately has always been one of those eyesores that it's in various states of disrepair and it's, um, unfortunately due to no one's fault, it's just not something that, um, you know, it was, it was a strange building because of the, the, the closeness, the, to the vicinity to Valley Road, uh, it just was, um, one of those strange anomalies that happened back in the day when nobody cared where you put a building, but, uh, I think that the use of it is gonna be a great use and I am also in favor of it. All right.
In light of the deliberations, Mr. Chairman, I'm anticipating a vote of approvals, uh, and I'm gonna assume unless I'm told otherwise, it's with all the stipulated two conditions, including the, uh, conditions set forth in the March 9th report of our planner, the March 8th report of our engineer, as well as those stated on the record, including the following, uh, the, bear with me, sign exits, we'll...
No parking sign.
We have the yield to, yield to traffic, um, uh, type sign that was discussed after a full stop, yield to traffic right and left, whatever the specific language will be, subject to the, uh, Marsh County, uh, planning board's review and approval, uh, since it's in their right-of-way and, uh, also subject to the input of our township engineer, um, we have the, uh, stop sign at the exit, uh, with...
Being replaced.
Being replaced and one new, uh, stop line being added, uh, as well to the, uh, egress point from the lot, um, the signs, uh, will be pursuant and consistent with our sign ordinance requirements.
The lighting.
Uh, the, this, the sign will not, uh, will be white, uh, I'm sorry, wait, white, no, no, no white, not white.
Wood.
I'm sorry.
Wood, wood.
No, no, I'm sorry, wait, we're getting, no, no, but I'm looking at the color here, we had, there was a discussion...
Blue, blue with white lettering.
Blue with white lettering, okay. Um, we also have, uh, the HVAC, uh, will be, wall unit will be, uh, reflected on the architecturals, the drainage calculations to be run, uh, post-approval, uh, to show compliance, uh, including, uh, potential changes and adjustments to the size of the drain, et cetera, subject again to the review and approval of our township engineer. The, uh, lighting will be back shielded, uh, there'll be a bush added to the corner of the wall, uh, as, uh, as testified to, uh, the affidavit will be revised as represented and the, uh, lease provisions will be provided to the board and the lease amended so that there's a binding agreement, uh, whereby the specifics of the employee parking vis a vis its location and number of spaces...
And the customer board.
Separate and apart from the seven customer parking spaces will be, uh, demonstrated to the board post-approval, that is a binding agreement as the board is relying on same. And, bear with me, if there were any others that we stipulated to, uh...
The no parking at the exits.
Uh, the no parking, uh, on, on the exit sign, also down, uh, the sign lighting, uh, for the front facade sign will be down-facing lighting, uh, and will not be, the sign will not be backlit nor will it be internally illuminated and there will be no lighting on the awning. And, what did I leave out?
I would just add a note about, um, county approval regarding that, um...
Bush.
Need a dedication for the right-of-way.
Of the dedication.
Essentially satisfying any, any outstanding...
Yep, well, all outside agency approvals, including the county requirements, included but not limited to, as our engineer stated, the dedication, uh, 66 foot, 33 and a half foot, uh, half point to the center line.
Steve, there was a good discussion about the concrete wall remaining neutral without any...
Any design...
That's where I had white, I meant...
I think that's...
Right. The concrete was to remain, uh...
Not yellow. Thank you.
A, uh, neutral shade, right, with no lettering or coloring.
Thank you, I wrote white instead of neutral, my apologies, that's what it was.
Uh, do I have motion to approve the application?
I'll move that.
Second?
Second.
Oh, sorry, wait, who was the second?
No, I was, I moved, I moved the...
Mr. Rosenberg.
And Jonathan.
Okay, Mr. Aronia?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Ginakis?
Yes.
Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes.
Mr. Hayne?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Johnson?
Yes.
Chairman Gurek?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That, you went to seven, right?
Yes.
That was seven, yep, sorry, Jessica.
That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. You're welcome. Good luck, guys, good luck.
When you start deliberating.
I would say, I would say we should be in business within, I'd say, August.
Nice, good, great, good. Looking forward to it.
Most important, most important question, you remain, you remain under oath.
We're still, no, no, we're still, we haven't...
Yero or gyro?
Yero.
Yero, hey!
You cannot watch the last one.
You're not.
Did you watch the tape?
That's sort of like saying Capicola or Gabagoo.
We're still on the air.
We're still on the air.
Motion to adjourn?
We're still in the meeting.
Yeah, we're still, we're still in the meeting.
Scott.
Scott.
Still in the meeting.
He's my bouncer. All right.
If it helps the board, I have no new, new, no new business, or old business, so...
Okay, um... Motion to adjourn? Wait a minute, do we have anything else? Is that it?
And what's anticipated for the next meeting?
Forty-four Plainfield returning.
Okay.
That's right, the Rock.
All right, um...
Really returning this time?
We have no, um, old business or new business, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Okay, everybody in favor, say aye. Aye, okay, we're adjourned.